We'll call the meeting to order. Ariel, would you call the roll?
Hal Glanville.
Here.
JR Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Melissa Niles.
Here.
Travis Orbach.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Linda Varvel.
Here.
Thank you. Will you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as you can see, the mayor is still out of town on personal business, so as council president, I'll be facilitating the meeting tonight. Council members, once again, please abstain from any agenda item you believe you have a conflict of interest with prior to voting. And with that, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the August 21st council meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 21st council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the bills in between?
I make a motion to approve the bills in between for $198,089.61.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the current claims?
I make a motion to approve the current claims of $77,341.29.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims?
Make a motion to approve the Wells Fargo credit card claims, $10,637.43.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any communications from the public? Okay. Seeing none, we have a council update from Public Works engineer Tracy Bastian.
Wireless mic, that's handy. Well, good evening. Yeah, small audience tonight. Well, over the last month, especially over the last two weeks, I think we're all happy to be able to be driving on some smoother surfaces. That is definitely a nice cumulative change, that we're now being able to, you know, use the new part of the road. We had an update meeting this morning, and what you're going to see over the next few weeks is continuation of some concrete placement. They will be doing another lane, or I think they're actually calling it a bay, along South Chicago Street. And then they'll be moving towards doing the sidewalks, like they're in front of Ace Hardware and along in that area. So probably over the next few weeks, you're going to see that section of South Chicago probably be pretty well finished, which will be nice. The intersection over here, the Sixth Street realignment, there was a discussion this morning as to how far they will try to actually pave that area yet this fall. And there is a goal to at least pave it partway in, probably to where it intersects with the existing West River Street, that backstreet in there that goes over to Brookside Park. The permanent alignment with the Dip Bridge, that is slated for next year. So as far as their actual work to do that section, that would not be expected to be done this fall. They are hoping to resume work on the utilities going north on North River Street from where they left off, in the vicinity of, well, kind of there in the vicinity of the coffee shop, well, actually south of that, up to the intersection with Minicotta and National Avenue. That will probably begin later in the month, so we can anticipate that. That's going to be a little bit challenging for traffic, because it's so narrow in there that they anticipate they will have a signal system set up. So I don't know if that will be 24 hours a day, but it very well may be during the peak of that construction, because those utility lines start to cross out further into the street. It's just the way the alignment is, and then how it connects up with Minicotta. So that is a challenging area. That's probably one of the tighter areas that they will have to work in coming up. But that's just a heads up, to expect those signals probably later in the month. Another thing, of course, I think everybody's probably curious about, is when is the actual construction of the suspended sidewalk and the towers and all of that going to start? And they're again today, tentatively, probably in about a month. So probably in October, we'll probably start to see some of the towers going up. At the same time, they will be, of course, removing the old railing system, a knee wall system, the combination of pipes and concrete. We were told they have a special type of a saw that cuts that concrete knee wall off. They use that for bridge restorations and things like that. So I'm kind of curious to see how that's going to be. I think that will be somewhat interesting to see that process. So, you know, just looking ahead over the next 60 days, you're probably going to see quite a few things start to really look like they're more finished, and that will be good. There is also progress being made towards temporary power for North River Street for the lighting. And the exact timeframe on that wasn't really given this morning, but that is in progress. So it looks like we will have some streetlights, I'm not sure how many, on North River Street over the winter, so it won't be as dark as it was this past year. And that's pretty much the update on the road project. We also have our water main replacement project that's tucked away over on Lookout Avenue and Walnut Street, and that's coming along just fine. The stretch on Lookout Avenue, that water main is in, and he has gone around the corner. He's making the basically one-block run on Walnut, start tying in the services in a few days. And I would expect that that project will probably be all wrapped up within a couple weeks. So that's my update. I'll take any questions if you have any.
Any questions for Tracy?
Any word on the university intersection with lights?
Oh. Nothing specific. The term "signal" was used at today's meeting. I did not hear any dates associated with it. You mean the signal, the stoplight?
Right.
Yeah. Nothing definite yet, but closer. I guess all of it's ultimately closer, but no specifics on that.
Just a couple of questions, Tracy. The workup on Walnut and Lookout Avenue, that's just going as far as Edgewood Terrace, is that correct?
It actually doesn't even go that far.
Kind of stops somewhere in front of Frank's house?
Yeah, it goes past Frank's house.
Like a real old timer that I can say that?
That, you know, you have Edgewood Terrace, you have Hickory, you have Walnut, and then you have that little stretch in between that is probably technically Hickory. Yeah, but no, it does not go up that, it just goes to the end of Walnut. Actually Walnut's platted all the way up the hill, but, and there is a sewer line that comes down Walnut. But yeah, it'll be past Frank's house, it'll be a flushing hydrant there at the end of it, essentially replacing what's currently there that is transite, and we were having some problems with it.
Okay. And the water line replacement that's still planned on North River, will that eliminate the remainder of the ductile iron?
Yes.
So we're still not out of the woods because of the improperly bedded PVC, but we'll at least be
Right.
Done with the ductile iron?
Yes, and unfortunately, we are finding other cases of improperly bedded PVC
Yes, we are.
In other parts of the town, yes, unfortunately.
Regarding the lighting, I do have an email from Matt Ripentrop that has a few more specifics, unless he had anything different to say on how far that lighting would go, and an estimate of when they thought that would be in, if that's okay to share?
Sure, go ahead, share, yeah.
The temporary lighting that they're going to put in will cover 10 streetlights that will run from essentially Jennings north to about the new Chinese restaurant, the old bakery, or the old VFW hall, depending on how long you've been in the area. That is something that the DOT will be paying for the installation and removal of the temporary power, and they hope to complete that in three to four weeks. So a good portion of North River will have actual street lighting on it, and so during the rest of the construction, maybe we'll be able to move the solar-powered lights on up between Minicotta Coffee and Minicotta Street.
Get a little more concentration with those. If they're close together, I mean, they help, but they're not big lights.
No, they're not, but they're better than
They're better than nothing, yeah.
And can you stick around for just a little bit, in case anybody has a question, when we talk about the electrical to the Welcome Island?
Oh, yeah, sure.
It shouldn't be long before we're there.
Okay, no problem.
Tracy, I had a question.
Yeah.
I saw on Aaron's weekly blog, or whatever you want to call it, notice that we get about the project, the road project, how it's, what they're planning on doing, and where we're at at the present time. It talked about storm sewer tie-ins.
Oh, yes.
Or storm sewer, is that already in place in some of the paved area we have now? It's just that they have to connect now from that
Over.
Where it's draining across.
Yeah, that is what that is, yeah, the storm sewer tie-ins to cross over some of those areas where we were driving, and now they have access to be able to
And that's just from Jennings to Minicotta, right, that they're
Yes, there may be, I think they actually already did the ones further north earlier this year, but definitely that one there at Jennings, yeah.
Okay.
Jennings and North River Street.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Tracy. Got one question for you. The new lights that are put up, the globes on them, where do they rated at as far as, where do they rated at as far as hail hitting them?
That's a good question. I would have to look at the specifications on them as far as impact resistance, what they are. I mean, they're, you know, they're definitely a municipal grade light fixture. I don't know if they actually have a rating, you know, that's actually a numerical rating of impact resistance. But that's, yeah, it's a good question. Hopefully, they're very durable.
They're better than my skylights in my house, they're
That'd be a long
Not good at all.
Yes, it would. Thanks, Tracy.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
I'll stick around for your, in case you have discussions on that island.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 202301 to establish a temporary part-time airport manager position?
I make a motion to approve 2023-21, establish temporary part-time airport manager position.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through L?
I make a motion to approve personnel action A through L.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I abstain, since my name's on there?
I don't think you need to, since it's an exit, but
Okay.
And it was volunteer to begin with, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think you need to.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1248-2024, the appropriations ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 1248, 2024 appropriations ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? I'm not going to go through this line by line. This is our 2024 budget. I'm going to look up to Ariel from time to time, in case I say something inappropriate. This includes all of our governmental funds, as well as our enterprise funds. Our goal with each year is to have a structurally balanced budget in which our expenditures equal our revenues. We were not able to accomplish that this year. And the general fund will be pulling $319,897 from the fund balance in order to balance the budget. I'm going to speak in approximate numbers here, so please don't hold me to the exact numbers, but about $250,000 of that is one-time purchases. The remainder is recurring expenses. When you go through the governmental funds, and these are grouped per South Dakota codified law, we have $691,000 and change for general government. There's $1,181,000 and change associated with public safety. That includes police, the dispatch services, what we pay the fire department, and also our development coordinator expenses. We've got $1,280, almost $283,000 associated with public works. That's highways and streets, snow removals, street lighting, street cleaning, nuisance complaints, the airport, the cemetery, and donation to Prairie Hills Transit. Under Health and Welfare, which is the animal control, what we pay Black Hills Humane Society, $24,000. Culture and Recreation is $713,000 and almost $500, and that's Recreation, Senior Citizens' Meals Program, Parks, Library, and the Mueller Center. Conservation and Development, $47,000 for economic development and assistance. And I believe that's what we would donate or pay to Shedco for their services, as well as the property tax
Rebates. The rebates?
Yes, the property tax rebates. So that brings our general fund to about $3,939,848. Under Special Funds, that is funded by the liquor lodging and dining tax, there's $182,000. $145,600 of that is 80% funding of the Chamber of Commerce, and $36,400 is other expenditures. And I apologize, I can't remember what the others expenditures are.
It's a few things, nothing big and notable, but we support the media coordinator position
Media coordinator, okay.
That's separate than what we pay them of their 80%.
Yeah. Under the Additional Sales Tax Fund, there's $787,700. And what that is, is that's one-third of the 2% city sales tax. We use that fund to build things, retire debt, and it's also used as the budgeted subsidies for Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Southern Hills Golf Course. We don't always have to use that subsidy, but to balance the budget, we need to show that subsidy, so that's in there. The Business Improvement District, and that is funded by a
Bid taxes?
Yeah, the bid taxes, that's $90,100, and that's promoting Hot Springs, that's their, it's a business improvement effort. We've got $1.5 million for capital improvements, that's mostly the suspended sidewalk and the utility work. And so that's most everything except the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds are those funds that have their own revenue streams. That's the sewer, the water, solid waste, Evans Plunge, and Southern Hills Golf Course. So that in a very rough nutshell is the appropriations budget we're going to be voting on. Is there any other discussion, or comments, or questions? We spent two very long nights of budget hearings going through every line of about 45 accounts, so these numbers were not flippantly put together.
Misty gave me a list of notable expenses, but it is single-spaced in front and back, so I'm not going to try to read it to all of you. But if there's something you're wondering about, there's a good chance it's on here if you'd like to look at it.
Could you make a copy of that and put it in my folder?
Yes, yep. Does everyone want one?
Can you email it to me?
What?
Can you email it to me?
I can't.
Okay, well, if there's no other discussion, Ariel, would you call the roll?
Yes. Deborah Johnston.
Yes.
Bill Lukens.
Yes.
Travis Orbach.
Yes.
Larry Pratt.
Yes.
Hal Glanville.
Yes.
JR Huddleston.
Yes.
Melissa Niles.
Yes.
Linda Varvel.
Yes.
Thank you, council. And just as a final note, there is a regulatory requirement that we have a finalized and passed budget by September, so it was an important vote you just did. Okay, can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2023-20, a resolution for gratuitous transfer of property to another political subdivision?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-20, a resolution for continuous transfer, for gratuitous transfer of property to another political subdivision, PD taser and accessories to Hermosa Marshall's office.
Second.
Any discussion?
Are these, why did we transfer those? Are they no longer of use to us?
This is actually one taser, I don't know if you were on council yet. We purchased new tasers for the department. The company that we bought them from took, we bought, I think, eight tasers, they took our eight old ones in on trade, whether they worked or not. And so we actually had nine, so we kept the best one back. It didn't matter if they worked, the ones they took in on trade. So they took the old tasers, credited us for them, so we had this taser, and as you see in your packet, a box of training cartridges, real cartridges, a data download, something or another, and through the chiefs partnering with other agencies, they've reestablished a Marshall's office in Hermosa. And so this is typically what happens with a lot of surplus law enforcement equipment, is to move it from one agency to another, so
So it sounds like, because it's the one, it's only one, and so there's no use when
There's absolutely no use, because
Makes sense, okay.
Of a lot of technical things that Ross, Chief Norton, can explain to you.
No, I understand, it doesn't make sense to have one, it's different from all the
Yeah, it doesn't. All it would do is take up shelf space if we kept it.
My memory might be messed up, but didn't, I thought we gave those to the Sheriff's Department?
No, that was body cameras.
Body cameras, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve Contract 2023-11, a use agreement for Fall River Swim Team to use the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs?
I make a motion to approve Contract 2023-11, use agreement for Fall River Swim Team to use Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, September 2023, March 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? And this, I believe, is just a, we do this this time every year? This is simply a renewal? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I think there was a typo on the agenda of the next one, as far as the contract, it said 2022-12, in the packet it said 2023-12.
Oh dang it.
So I'm going to ask for a motion to approve Contract 2023-12 between Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Laura Barner for fitness instruction.
I make a motion to approve Contract 2023-12 between Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Laura Barner for fitness instruction at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs facility between September 2023 and May 2024.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to authorize the Public Works engineer to accept the estimate of $10,854 from Muth Electric and authorize the installation of electrical services to the Welcome Island?
Make a motion to authorize the Public Works engineer to accept the estimate of $10,854 from Muth Electric and authorize the installation of electrical service to the Welcome Island at Jensen Highway and Sixth Street, being installed as part of the Highway 385 Road Reconstruction Project. Costs associated with the installation will be paid for by Parks Improvements, other than Buildings 101-45200-43300, to be funded by future contingency fund transfer.
Second.
Any discussion? I think there was a detailed sheet in your packet detailing this estimate, so if you have any questions, Tracy would be the one to ask.
Have we decided the proper, where it's going to be placed, or have we thought about where it would be placed so it gets easiest to use? We don't really know what we're going to be doing there, per se, but
Well, we've chosen a terminus point for this, you know, power to be brought in that will give us the, you know, the flexibility to, you know, hook things up. I mean, it'll be in a convenient spot, more towards the north, kind of towards the north central part of that island, if you will, that Welcome Park. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're, we're making it so it'll be easy for whatever we might want to add. Uh, I know there's going to be a clock there, and probably some outlets, you know, for holiday lights or, or, you know, whatever, uh, type of lighting that we may wanna have. I mean, it's hard to tell what will all develop in that little, it's actually not so little when it'll all be done, it's actually a pretty good-sized, uh, park.
Okay.
Okay, thanks, Tracy.
Tracy, real quick?
Yeah.
And it has nothing to do with the electrical part, but wasn't there and a discussion about water being plumbed to that as?
Oh, there's, yes, we have, we've provided the water, yeah, the water services there.
So you could put in your, your flowers and bushes or whatever else we decide to put in there as a welcome?
Right, because there is long-term plans to have grass and flower beds and, and even some trees in there, you know, DOT-approved trees, of course, but...
And still, and still off that subject of the electrical we just talked about, was there gonna be like a welcome to Hot Springs sign or something there?
There is a possibility of that too, maybe something similar to the one at the north end of town. Not the big ones on the far edge, but the one that's, uh, up by the Flatiron, maybe something similar to that.
I digress, thank you very much.
So, is this gonna be worked on this year, or will it be worked on next year?
Um, I think as far as, oh, the electrical itself, that would be done...
Just the whole Welcome Island concept?
I think the Welcome Island is a next-year project, because it's all related to the Sixth Street realignment, the Dip Bridge re, reconfiguration, yeah, and there's even some retaining wall that goes on the west side of this as it gets closer to, uh, the, the low-water crossing, also known as the Dip Bridge. So as far as seeing that finished and everything, that's, yeah, that's a next-year project.
So as far as that's going, Bill, that's, we've already got won some money coming out of next year for this, correct?
Well, this, no, this would be funded this year out of contingency, uh, because they'll need to purchase, uh, the materials.
Yes, the electrical will be done.
The electrical will possibly, for what Muth will be doing, may actually be, will likely be done this year.
Oh, yes, very likely.
The final, the, the bits and pieces that'll be put in once the island is done will be at a, a later time, but this is the...
Yes, they have to run, they have to establish the, uh, the power service on, on a pole and run the conduit, you know, underneath the new Sixth Street alignment, so if there's, if they put down permanent pavement on that little section of Sixth Street, uh, we would definitely wanna make sure that conduit's under there and that's all taken care of, so...
So as far as parks budget, I mean, it's covered?
Yeah, cause it'll be, it, it's covered in that, right now there's fifty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty in contingency, there's no currently planned draws on contingency, so that's why it was determined that we could pull this from contingency this year.
All right, thank you, sir.
So, yeah, there's nothing in parks that we can pull from, so we would have to supplement parks with contingency funds to do this.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Tracy, for putting up with my ramblings.
You're welcome.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve an automatic budget supplement of four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars to the Water Department?
I make a motion to, for an automatic budget supplement of four thousand nine hundred and forty dollars to the Water Department, building repairs and maintenance, six oh two dash four-three-three-five-zero dash four-two-five-two-zero, for the Evans Plun, for the Evans Pumping Station shingles and skylights replacement, revenue received from SDPAA, claim number GC two oh two two one-one-one-three-nine-zero.
Second. Any discussion? And this is a insurance claim that's paying for the repair of that roof?
You'll see this again next time for a much smaller dollar amount, as they build us separately for the skylight and the roof replacements, so...
Now, is that the whole roof, or is that the top and the little landing?
I'm not positive.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve a travel training request from the Finance Officer?
I make a motion to approve travel training request from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton to attend the BHAFOA meeting in Sturgis, South Dakota, on nine twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve a travel training request from the Finance Officer to attend the SDML Annual Conference?
I make a motion to approve travel training requests from Finance Officer Misty Summers-Walton to attend the South Dakota Municipal League Annual Conference in Rapid City, South Dakota, ten-four dash ten-six-twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve a travel training request from the Assistant Finance Officer, Ariel Bachman?
Make a motion to approve travel training request, request from Assistant Finance Officer Ariel Bachman to attend the SDML Annual Conference in Rapid City, South Dakota, ten-four and ten-five twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, Admin Finance, JR, Melissa?
Admin Finance will have their, uh, meeting on September eighteenth at one o'clock here at the Mueller Civic Center.
Thank you, JR. Airport Advisory, Travis?
The Airport Advisory Committee will meet on Thursday at the airport at eight-thirty AM.
Thank you, Travis. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Larry?
Oh, the next meeting will be this, the fourteenth of this month at seven PM here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you, Larry. Historic Preservation Commission, Deborah?
Uh, they will meet tomorrow, the sixth, five PM here at the Mueller Center.
Thank you, Deborah. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Linda?
They will meet on September fourteenth at noon at the plunge.
Thank you, Linda. Parks Recreation Beautification and Cultural Development, Larry, Linda?
Next meeting is tomorrow here at the Mueller Center at two o'clock, everyone is invited.
Thank you, Larry. Planning and Zoning Commission, Deborah?
We are meeting Wednesday, the twentieth, at City Hall, seven PM.
Thank you, Deborah. Public Safety, JR?
Public Safety will meet, uh, Thursday, September seventh, at two o'clock here at the Mueller Civic Center, all are welcome.
Thank you, JR. Well, so much for a clean sweep, Public Works, Hal.
Public Works last met on August twenty-ninth at one PM here at the Mueller Center. Council members present, were myself and Bill Lukens, employees present, wastewater foreman Jason Correll, and wastewater technician Robert Sandoval. Members of public input regarding the need for handicap parking at the north side of Centennial Park, this item will be entered on the project list. New business wastewater foreman Jason Correll introduced new wastewater technician Robert Sandoval. Centennial Golf Course Retaining Wall Reconstruction Bid Review, committee reviewed the estimate proposed for the repair of the clubhouse retaining wall reconstruction, and recommends accepting proposal and proceeding with the word. Committee also reviewed the information provided regarding repairing or replacing air conditioning units of the clubhouse and support placing the units assuming adequate funds in the golf course cash balance account. Public Works Committee charter, the charter was thoroughly reviewed and the committee recommends adopting it. Streets Maintenance, street crews have been working on street sweeping, curb painting, and assisting the water department with leak repair. The water department has repaired various water main leaks attributed to improperly embedded PVC mains. Crews continue to support the road construction project. Wastewater, the foreman is addressing the dumping issues with Hill Septic, the issues have also been communicated to third-party users, issue seem to be improving. Going forward, wastewater foreman recommends revising the service agreement to formally address the concern. This item will be placed on active project lists. A white jet truck is in rapid for pump repair. Public Works Engineer, the contractor continues to make progress on a waterline replacement at Lookout Avenue, work is progress from Minnacotta up to Lookout nearly to Walnut Street. On the thirty-day outlook, primary activities for all members will be focused on city responsibilities associated with the road construction project, in addition to those noted in active projects table. Streets and Maintenance, Parks and Recreation Budget Improvements Other Than Buildings has been reviewed by the Parks Committee Council Representative, there are currently adequate funds to power to handle the waterfall. Purchase replacement pillar for kidney spring gazebo, with enough funds remaining to provide the requested ten thousand one hundred dollars to assist in resurfing Butler Park tennis pickleball courts. Public Works supports funds for this purpose. Water valve replacement on Canton Avenue, wastewater manhole cover modification to accommodate the snowplow. Goal is to complete three problem coverage per year.
Okay, thank you, Hal. Regarding the, the bid we received for the clubhouse retention wall repair, that came in at a little over a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Uh, when we first went out for bid, no bids were received. Uh, the mayor found this contractor that was willing to take a look at the job, so it's our understanding that because no bids were received, that when we went out for the RFP, we can receive or can accept this bid. It does seem reasonable. Albertson Engineering is the one that put together the, uh, suggested plan for repair. This company has worked a lot with Albertson Engineering, so it seems to be a good fit. And, uh, there's, I believe currently is adequate funds in the golf course cash balance account to cover this if they so, if they choose to do it that way, or if we have to do something else as recommended by the Finance Office, so, uh, it looks like we're gonna be able to, uh, correct this. The, the discussion regarding the air conditioning units, the units that are there have the old R twenty-two free on, they have a SEER rating, and I'm going by memory now of, I think, eleven, which isn't that great. Uh, the new units that they would propose, uh, that, uh, we got bids to put in from Bill's Heating, uh, uh, AC and Heating, those, the SEER rating was up around, I don't know, what, about an eighteen? It was the typically high efficient numbers that you, you see these days, so, uh, long-term it would probably be a better way to go, we'd save some energy, and if, uh, disconnecting the old units, we're gonna have to do something with the R twenty-two, and then if you do move the units, something that old, you don't know what you're gonna end up having to repair. They don't make the parts for them, so if something does break, if it's not on a shelf somewhere, then you're still out of luck, so that's why it's, uh, Public Works recommendation is if the funds are there, uh, to go ahead and replace those units, so... Any questions for Hal or I? Okay, um, I've got no information from Southern Hills Golf Advisory Committee. Ariel, do you have anything from, uh, Finance?
I do, I have a small Assistant Finance Officer report this week. Uh, Free Dump Week is next week, September eleventh through the fifteenth. I wanna thank our maintenance crews for the long hours they put in to make this possible, and a quick reminder that the deadline to register for the Municipal League Annual Conference is September fifteenth, next Friday, so if any of you guys plan to attend and have not yet gotten to Misty or I, please do.
Hey, Ariel, are there gonna be any recordings on that? Cause that's just kinda private.
I don't think so, because this is not just like everyone sits and there's one presentation, it's you can choose to go to any room, and there's something different going on in every room, and you kinda pick what interests you, and because it's in Rapid, if you can make it, I recommend going at least a day or an afternoon or...
How come in twenty twenty-three, we, they don't livestream those things?
I don't know, I think it would be a lot for that type of an event, it's huge. The smaller ones, the smaller trainings, they do, they do typically video.
I think it gives you the opportunity to, um, get to, to network, get to know your peers in different communities, create that network.
Right, yep. The biggest part is meeting people, for sure.
Uh, we don't have a mayor's report, but I did decide to give you a council president's Over the past couple of weeks, I've had the opportu, opportunity to see more of the detailed operation of the city, as our mayor has been attending family issues. I've attended a meeting between business owners in the South Dakota DOT, which Brett Naughton-Gall did an excellent job of chronicling in the August thirty-first edition of the Fall River County Herald-Star. I've had the opportunity to review and approve overtime and leave requests for city employees, and I've had the opportunity to take a variety of calls from citizens with various questions and concerns. With my brief time of expanded experience, I offer the following observations and requests. First, I wanna thank Mayor Nelson for the amazing job he is doing, especially at a time when the city administrator position is open. The mayor, the finance office, and each department head have taken on additional loads to keep the city functioning and moving forward. Next, the level of frustration in our town over the road construction is mounting on all fronts. Citizens, business owners, visitors, South Dakota DOT and their contractors, as well as our own city crews. There's no easy or quick solution, but I believe there are some small steps that each of us that call Hot Springs home can take to help us get through these very difficult First of all, whenever you can, despite some inconvenience, try to patronize our local shops and eating establishments. The project has been hard on our local businesses, and we need to do what we can to make sure that they are here to prosper when the work is finally done. When the opportunities arise to promote our local business establishments, take that opportunity to let others know that Hot Springs is open for business despite the road construction. Let consideration and courtesy be the driving and guiding principles as you move about town. Yield to pedestrians in crosswalks. Keep your speed at or below the posted speed limit, and if someone frustrates you, try to take the high road, smile, and let it go. You probably don't know how their day has already been going. Stephen Covey, in one of his Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, one of his principles was seek first to understand and then be understood. Tonight, the council passed the first reading of the twenty-twenty-four Appropriations Ordinance. This twenty-twenty-four budget is not a structurally balanced budget in that expenditures exceed revenues. There's always, there always seems to be more and more expenditure demands on the city budget, but since about half of our revenue is from sales tax, every sale our businesses miss... businesses miss means less revenue that in turn funds city services. As I said before, when you can shop and support local businesses, please do. But when that isn't possible, please consider online purchases. Many folks don't know, but when you purchase online, the city gets their, our normal sales tax. If you go to another city and make that purchase, that city gets their tax, their sales tax revenue. I've got something else that I wanted to say. I don't know if it would be out of place or offensive in this day and age. So I'm going to stop talking as the council president and interject as communications from the public, if you'll allow me to do that. And so just as an individual, I'm going to make a statement as a citizen. And I'd like to call on, and I'll, I'll rephrase it a little bit. I'm going to, I'd like to call on the, the faith community to stand in the gap on behalf of the city of Hot Springs. Your elected officials need wisdom from above in order to make the right decisions. City workers need health and protection. Many departments are not fully staffed and between the road reconstruction project, normal duties, and emergency callouts, they're being pushed to their limits and they need strength, health, and protection for every aspect of their lives. It's written in Psalm 133, verse 1, that how good and pleasant it is when brothers dwell together in unity. Pray for unity within our city, that despite our differences in opinions, backgrounds, and beliefs, we will each find ways to help others in our community to succeed. There's a principle of regarding giving in Philippians 4, chapter 4, verses 14 through 19. And because there's so many people in this town that are givers, you look out on Facebook and somebody's always giving to someone else for a need. Ask God to supply the needs of this city and its people and businesses according to His riches and glory. So, thank you. I'm sure there's more that could be said regarding each subject I've mentioned, but this is a summary of what I'd like to share. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.